Town Council meeting. Please stand for the Budget Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America, to the republic of original states, to my nation, my God, and to the people, with liberty, justice, and all.
Mrs. Mallow?
Counselor Shabbat.
Present.
Counselor Ryan.
Present.
Counselor Hilton.
Present.
Counselor Demidiris.
Present.
Counselor Edwards.
Present.
Counselor LaBeau.
Here.
Counselor Perry is absent.
Counselor Edwards is going to help me this evening. I had vocal cord surgery, and I'm doing really well, but I don't want to strain too much. Can everybody understand me right now? Good. Consent agenda.
What was that?
Consent agenda. CA 1, approval of regular session meeting minutes of September 25th, 2017. Approval of executive session meeting minutes of September 25th, 2017. Approval of special meeting minutes of September 26th, 2017. Approval of special meeting minutes, open session meeting September 21st, 2017. Approval of special meeting minutes, executive session meeting September 21st, 2017. CA 2, receipt of minutes from the following boards and commissions. Cemetery Commission, Economic Development Commission, Planning Board 2, Charter Review Commission. CA 3, correspondence, receive and file. Honorable Governor Ramondo regarding legislation H. 5881 sub-A and S. 0722 sub-A regarding firefighter disability pensions. Town of Foster, resolution opposing H. 6023 relating to animal husbandry, unlawful confinement of recovered animal. CA 4, approval of tax assessor abatements. CA 5, town administrator, police and fire overtime reports for September. CA 6, town administrator, department, monthly reports for September. CA 7, Susan Gill, planning board administrative officer, report for September. CA 8, town administrator, approval of extension of contract for comprehensive plan update consultant Allison Ring. CA 9, town administrator, approval to proceed with RFP for on-call planning and grant writing consulting services. CA 10, town administrator, approval to proceed with two RFPs for police pension legal services and actuarial services. CA 11, DPW Director Anderson, request authority for installation of handicap parking signs at Town Farm. CA 12, Tiverton Fire Department Chief Lloyd, approval to purchase John Deere HPX Gas ATV from Padula Brothers Incorporated of Rainham, Mass. under MPA FAC 88 for $8,264.76 using funds from Representative Edwards legislative grant.
Would anyone like to remove anything from the consent agenda? I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor? Open forum. There's one request, John Reed, abutment Stone Bridge lights. Mr. Reed?
Yes, thank you. My name is John Reed. My wife and I are at 21 Riverside Drive on the basin, and I want to speak to ask the council to reconsider the plans to put lighting on the Stone Bridge abutment and to try to put it back to get some community input into it. The Stone Bridge Committee, to my knowledge, has not met since 2013 and has no minutes of record, of public record, so I don't know what consideration that committee has given to it or not. But my point would be is that there are a few places in the basin more beautiful than the end of that abutment as a place in the evening and after the sun goes down to see the boats come back, come by, to watch the moon rise in the east, to watch the new moon set in the west. And the purpose of lighting is to add to one's experience and to enable one to see better. And lighting in that location, on that abutment, does the opposite. It makes it more difficult for people to enjoy what is beautiful about that basin, what is beautiful about the sky, what is beautiful about the stars and the sun and the moon in the evening. And I think by putting seven lights along there from one end to the other, and that's what the specifications suggest, at heights of 20 to 25 feet, is wrong and destroys that experience. But it not only destroys the ability to have that experience at the end of that abutment, it destroys the experience for anyone wanting to look down the harbor towards the open water of the Secana River and passage to the ocean. Instead, as we see now, blocked off because there was no citizen input, to my mind, the lighting on Route 24 north, we're going to have lighting that extends to the center of the channel virtually, which is going to block the view of a beautiful passage, a beautiful natural waterway. I think it's a big mistake to put lights there. I don't, it's not a question of money in my mind, and I know that's an issue when I've learned about it from reading about it, but I think it's a matter of whether it's a good decision or not, and I would urge you to reconsider it, find a way to put it before more people to think of all the alternatives. We have no lights there now. To my knowledge, there have never been lights there. The pictures that go way back only show a light on land before the abutment, and I don't see that there's any compelling reason. I'm sure people will talk about safety and, you know, what are people up to? But people go out there now. I'm not aware that there's any, I go out there. I'm not aware that there's any great issue that requires lighting it and destroying it. This is a village, not a city. Preserve the most beautiful thing and don't light it up to become an eyesore and to destroy the village you want to enjoy it.
Chief Lakey, did you want to comment?
Yes, I would agree with you. I do think it is a safety issue. We're going to have a lot more people out there, and I think there should be some appropriate lighting. You don't have to take away from the ambiance, but I think lighting is applicable, especially if you're going to encourage more people to go out there, not a select or limited field.
Mr. Reed, I believe the abutment committee has been meeting. I think they're meeting tonight, aren't they? No. Well, they called, they called it Stone Bridge.
It's not on the, not on the accessible public record, I will say that.
What is the committee that Brett runs?
It was an open, in fact, it's on your.
Right. But now it's, it's called, I can't think of that.
There is a new Stone Bridge Committee that's been having public meetings that have been posted all along.
Maybe it's another committee that goes by a similar name.
It goes by a similar name, but the committee that has taken, took this project over, it's, is it ad hoc?
I can't remember what it's called.
Stone Bridge Committee, Abutment Committee.
Well, perhaps it has been considered, but it's never too late to consider it. Maybe you'll run out of money, but I think people understand the safety issue, but I think to destroy what is beautiful without a clearly demonstrated problem is a big mistake and just erodes further the beauty of this basin, which has already been done by the Las Vegas lighting on Route 24. But that's my point.
Mr. Reed, the chairman of the committee is Brett Pelletier, and if you don't mind, I'd like to give him your number.
I would love it.
And maybe he can call to you and explain to you what the lighting would entail.
Okay.
Is that a good idea?
I did go to the Department of Public Works. I do know what the lights are. I do know.
Well, if you want to give your telephone number to the clerk, I'll make sure that Brett gets it.
All right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Public hearing, advertise public hearing. It's too long.
Approval of proposed amendments to Chapter 6, Article 2, Section 630, Article 4, Section 655, Article 5, Section 677, and Section 680, and proposed addition titled Article 6, Outdoor Seating, Section 683 and 684. Alcoholic beverages, liquor license continued from September 11th meeting tabled.
Appointment, do we have to vote to table?
Yeah. And then a vote, continue it to a date term, you wouldn't have to reanalyze. You don't have to speak up.
So all you need is a vote, so all you need is a vote to table this. I'd like to entertain a motion, please.
Madam President, motion to table public hearing, item B. 1.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor? Unanimous. Appointments and regulations, budget committee application to date, three vacancies to next general election November 2018. Appointments continue to October 23rd meeting. I don't need a vote for that?
No, that's because at the last meeting you stated it was going to be continued to this, so I put it on there indicating we're further continuing, so people will know it wasn't going to be.
And the reason is many of the applicants contacted us and asked if we could make it for next meeting because they're all involved with either work or they're at the school committee meeting, and they like to be present during the appointments. Unfinished.
Don't shut me up. I'm in a pitch box.
Unfinished business. Town Administrator, Charter Review proposed changes draft input.
Thank you, Madam President. From a couple sessions ago, we put on the agenda for the council to consider what changes you all want to propose. I believe, Madam President, you were talking with the Charter Review Commission to have a date in later November.
Yes, I have the date.
For presentation. What you have in front of you is just some of the administrative changes that have either come in from department heads or I've recognized or talking with the town clerk that we've recognized that need to be changed. The significant one there is the creation of this land use and development department, which is the second item on this unfinished business. But here for your consideration, what I'd like to try to do is bring this back on the agenda for the 23rd for a vote for you all to approve or not approve it, so we have something we can send to the Charter Review Commission. If we need some more time, I think we're going to have it because it's the.
The date is November 20th.
So we have actually two more council sessions before that.
They gave us one of the later meetings on purpose. Any questions or comments?
Madam President.
Yes, John?
Motion to continue this to the next meeting.
Anything else, Trisha?
I actually have a comment, a suggestion, and not that I want to make more work for us, but I'm wondering whether or not we should consider having a workshop specifically to go through our charter review recommendations. There are some things in here that I would really like to discuss in more detail. I'm not sure if we try and do it, you know, in a regular meeting and take a vote whether or not that's the most efficient, or would it be better for all of us, because I'm sure there are other people who have some charter review recommendations, for everybody to get all their stuff together at one time, because some of the things I think may overlap and, you know, actually set aside some time for a workshop to go through them and vote and then be able to have one completed document that we can present to the Charter Review Committee.
I suggest if you want to do this, October is really full of meetings. There's one week we have three. So we could table it till November 6th and then have the workshop, and then we'll be prepared for November 20th. How does everybody feel? We'll have a workshop on November 6th. It might not be here because the Charter Commission is here, so it would have to be somewhere else. Christine?
I had a question. So, so I had some questions for clarification, so would you rather that I hold that for the workshop?
I think so, and then everybody can look this over and think of other suggestions, if that's okay with you.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
And then the rest of us, if anybody else.
Because I have a couple.
Other things, we can all submit them ahead of time and go through them all at once.
I was just going to suggest, if you have anything you can submit to me, because it's, what does this mean, or I'd like to change this, please do that.
And it's more, it's actually, okay, that's a good idea because it's clarification. It's like, do you mean this or do you mean this? It's like, and is this, is this an FTE? You know, so it's just like that. That would be easy for you to, to look over and, yeah, okay. So do you want us to do that individually?
We could. We could send call emails with any suggestions.
Okay, okay.
So Counselor Edwards, your motion is to table it till November 6th. Is that okay?
Correct.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor? Thank you.
So that's going to be a workshop, Madam President?
Yes.
We can vote at a workshop, though, right?
Well, then we'll make it a meeting. A special meeting. Town Administrator, discussion relative to a reorganization of the planning zoning department.
Thank you, Madam President. So the next, that proposed org chart is just really taking the words that are in the proposed changes for the charter and just putting it down on paper so we can have something to talk about. Again, not putting this up for a vote, just wanted to get it in front of you visually. This is based somewhat on the conversation we had at the workshop a couple weeks ago with the idea that creating a combined department allows us to consolidate and better use our clerical resources and to focus on getting the, ultimately the town planner as the director of this department and the land use administrator that we spoke of. I had hoped to have the job description for you this session for the land use administrator. It's written, but actually meeting with the solicitor on Thursday to discuss some issues with it, and I've been doing some benchmarking on the whole concept with other planners around the state. I think Counselor Edwards, you mentioned it specifically, but I think it was a consensus that we do need to look at what else is going on in the state. And a fairly easy review of other websites around the state, you know, indicated that other jurisdictions, Exeter, Cumberland, Middletown, Westerly, Black Island, do take the normal model of a planning department and a building zoning department and swap it around a little bit and actually have planning and zoning and building off by itself. Also, as a matter of fact, Black Island, and again, it's a question of their size and demand, they just have it crammed into one department, which is actually the proposal that I'm putting in front of you for consideration. So it, what I found is, as we were looking, as I was looking at the job descriptions for zoning officials and the job descriptions for the administrative officer, there's a lot of overlap, and even in the words used. And the question that I've been asking other planners that I've talked to around the state is, hey, can that happen? I mean, is the workload such that you just can't have someone who's doing administrative officer work and then also doing zone enforcement or zoning? And it can be a problem. I think one thing that we have an advantage is, is that the building official, our current building official, has been doing zoning. It's a question of the amount of time that he has to do both at this time and as we develop, have more development in the town, his building inspection role is going to only increase. So if we look at this as less of a strict stay in your box organization and more of a, hey, we've got certain talents, let's use those talents within a department, we could make this work. So the written description of this is obviously in the draft charter revisions, but that's where the thinking is now. Thank you.
Madam President.
Yes, Randy?
I was going over this thing today at work. We have, as you can see, so everybody can see all my arrows and everything everywhere, this is what we're going to, this is what we're going to be looking at. This is what the, the normal person is going to come in and look at this. We have a town administrator. Now we want to go to a town director, town planner. Our basic thing that we need in this town is a planner. We don't need all these extra steps. We hire this guy right here, this, this director, town planner. He better know all of Neil Hall's job. He's going to have to need all of his job, and then he's going to take your job. You're not going to have a job. We don't need you if we have this guy to tell these guys what to do. You're cutting yourself right out of the picture. So we have a town administrator, now we're going to have a town director. That's you. You are the town director. We don't need another town director. We need a planner. And that's our problem in this town. We need a planner, we need less government. We need a town administrator, we need a planner, a DPW director, we need a zoning official, which is Neil. And if we start, if people come in and look at this, well, you've got a land use administrator who takes care of the planning and the zoning with the building official over here who's taking care of the inspectors. Our town is a great little town. We work fine. We just got pieces missing. We don't need to add all of this. We need to add, and this is just my opinion, on one vote, just to put that, throw that out there. One, we need a planner. We need a good planner. Let's pay a good planner AO, let's pay that money. By the time we pay this person, this person, this person, a zoning, and this person's going to have to be really smart, because you're going to be Neil's boss, because he's going to have to know more than Neil. He's going to have to know more than Bill. He's going to have to know more than the chief and the other chief, because we're going to have, we're top-heavy. We're going to put us top-heavy. So let's stick to the basics, for now, anyway, hire a planner. And that's just the way I see this thing is, it's all over the place. It's just, let's cut everything out.
Counselor LaBeau, if you get rid of the director on top of the town planner, he's really not the director, he's the town planner. All we really did was, and correct me, everyone, if I'm wrong, we were going to have two building officials, because Neil was so busy with the zoning portion, he was unable to inspect. So all we really did was instead of two building officials, we clearly defined what each department was doing. So Neil is doing the inspections, and then instead of another official helping him, there is someone that's going to just be in charge of zoning and planning. So in a way, if you think about it, it defines it better for people walking into this building. If they needed an inspection, they go to Neil. If they need advice on zoning, they go to the town planner, who will refer them to the land use administrator. Is that an easier way to describe it?
Well, you're correct in that we are separating out from what is currently the code enforcement officer, Neil Hall. And he's, but he's primarily by experience and his primary job is the building inspector. So that, that doesn't change. He has three inspectors that he, that work for him, and, and in other towns, other jurisdictions, they hire a zoning enforcement officer to help the building official. So that's, that's a perfectly legitimate way to go on this as well. But in this case, since what, what I'm both seeing, what our discussions have been around and what I've, you know, just speaking with our own staff, namely Neil and Sue Gill as the acting AO, there's, seems to be such a need for making sure that the zoning questions and that relate to how do I go through the planning process? How do I go through a zoning variance problem? How do I staff things for, in front of the zoning board? All seem to be everything you see on the right-hand side. What we're trying to do is actually not hire all these people. That, we're, the only two additional hires at this point, and separating the clerical support, because that's a little bit different at this point, but we won't be hiring any extra clerical. We'll just be redistributing what we have from a billet perspective or a position perspective. We'll be hiring a land use officer, administrator, and ultimately, when we can get it into the budget, the town, the town planner. What you, what you exactly are asking for is a planner. That individual, if we can get the right experience level, should have the ability to manage a department. Now, I manage multiple departments, but I'm not an engineer, but I manage DPWs. I oversee his, that director who manages the actual department, the police. I've never been a police officer. So I don't believe that the director of a department that is combined necessarily has to know as much as Neil does. You leverage your sub-department heads in this case.
I can go along with it, but by looking at this chart, I grab my packet and I open this up and I go.
It looks more complicated than it is, I think.
When you see it in this form, it looks like you're cutting yourself right out of a job.
I don't think he deliberately did that.
If it saves you some money, maybe it's a thing to do.
Now, and also, Randy, the three inspectors are already here.
Right.
It's electric, plumbing, and fire.
Correct. And Neil's here.
Neil's here.
But I was looking at, you had a land use administrator. I mean.
But that's going to take part in Neil's job, so Neil can be freer to do what he's doing in there.
But with these big names you throw out here, this land use administrator, that comes with a big number.
Um, no, we talked about that. It doesn't necessarily have to be a big number, because it's not a town planner. It's not a planner.
Not a town planner. The way it's drafted is, is we're not looking for someone with a master's degree necessarily. We're looking for a bachelor's of some sort. We're looking for some experience. And I'll be frank with you, I am less interested in this position fitting into a box like you, you know, most bureaucracy like to do. That's a position where I'd like to hire a talent that goes through, you know, the review by the personnel board to make sure they're qualified, and goes through review and interview process by me and some other people, including Neil, including planning board people and zoning board people, to make sure that they have the basics. But I'm looking for a talent that might someday, like within six months, become the town planner.
Maybe the planner.
Okay, so, but my, my thing is just, for the town, for immediate, immediate hire for the town, I mean, we need a planner. So I think all our resources should be spent on the best planner that we can afford and then deal with where these people go later, because apparently we're going to need a planner and one other person. That's what he's talking about.
That's.
Basically what this whole thing means, a planner and one other person.
Right. And the, and the approach that we've chosen and in the consent agenda, you agreed to the RFP for planning services.
We did, yeah.
That's, those are temporary as we need them, so we'll get those planning services available to us. Ultimately, or relatively soon, we'd have the land use administrator, and that'll get us through this budget year with, in the budget that we have.
Okay, I just looked at this thing, seeing all these boxes, they were going to hire all of this stuff going on. You hammering me?
No, I'm hammering them.
Oh. I thought I did something.
No, you're not. I'm not hammering you.
So, all right, I'm done. Thank you.
Madam President.
Yes, Counselor Edwards?
I just have a question for the solicitor. Is it true that if you are planning, are appealing something from the planning board, you're essentially going to the zoning official? And is there, is there an issue with this land use administrator essentially being both the administrative officer for the planning board and the person who is being appealed to? In other words, we're creating Roger Goodell of the planning and zoning world?
Not exactly. You appeal to the zoning board, so the zoning officer.
Mike, use the mic, please.
Appealing from the planning board goes to the zoning board, and likewise, if you appeal from the zoning official, so you get a notice of violation for a zoning violation, you appeal that to the zoning board. So ultimately, appeals go to the zoning board.
We're actually meeting Thursday, and that's, we want to run through these scenarios to make sure that we haven't missed something.
Counselor Hilton?
Nope, I'm good.
You're all good. Anyone else?
Madam President?
Counselor Shabbat?
When we had the meeting on September 26th, we thought it was critical that we move forward to get some administrative officer relief, and I was expecting on this agenda to have a job description for the land use AO person.
My apologies. It's written, it's just, it's, I can't put it in front of you, it hasn't, doesn't have legal review, and I'm, I'm just talking to other planners around the state to get input before I put something that's not quite ready for you. So, next session.
So you're committing to have it on the next agenda?
Yes.
Which will be October 23rd. So do we need any action?
I think this will probably be discussed on the 11th hearing.
Okay, thank you. New business, senior center director Janet Holmes, authorization to advertise and hire senior center bus driver. I don't see Janet, so.
Pretty straightforward. The current bus driver is retiring. We actually have a new bus coming in. I think it actually has just been put on the rolls, on the insurance roll, so we have a new bus donated to us by Ripda. And so this is just getting, he actually hasn't retired yet, but this is just getting ahead of the power curve, so we can get the new guy found and, gal and found and put into place.
Any questions? I'd like to entertain a motion.
Madam President.
Counselor Edwards?
Motion to authorize senior center director Janet Holmes to advertise and hire senior center bus driver.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor? Unanimous. Counselor Hilton, Stafford Pond Water Quality, Department of Health and DEM Advisory.
Thank you. So as you may be aware, DEM and DOH issued a press release regarding Stafford Pond advising people to avoid contact with the pond because of a blue-green algae or cyanobacteria bloom. And, you know, cyanobacteria is a public health hazard. It's not only harmful for humans and in certain cases can, can make, make you very ill and cause permanent damage by the way. By the way, while I'm discussing this, it's also, can be highly toxic to pets, particularly But the reason that I put this on the agenda is because, you know, this is a bit of a warning shot, again, about Stafford Pond. Now, Carl DeStrams, who's the superintendent at Stonebridge, would be here tonight, except that they have their board meeting. And to be very, very clear about this, the finished water that Stonebridge is producing now and providing to their customers, as well as the water that they sell to North Tiverton, is perfectly safe to drink and meets all current EPA standards. However, you know, Stafford Pond is an invaluable resource for us, and this is, you know, this is a warning shot, that, that things are not going well over there. And it seems to me that 20 years ago, or so, the last time Stafford was in a really crisis situation, there was a lot of activity, a lot of money that was spent, the D E M was here, the EPA was here, there were water quality and land use consultants who came down, and there was a lot of activity in Town Hall, and one of the things that came out of this were, was the watershed overlay protection district regulations. And I included a copy of those for you, in particular, because one very interesting thing about these regulations in the zoning code, this is the only thing in any of the code, the Code of Ordinances, the zoning code, anyplace, where the council felt so strongly when they passed these ordinances, that they actually included editorial comments that go along with them. And I starred the comment, which says, "It's intended by the town council that this article be interpreted liberally in view of the paramount public interest involved in the preservation of critical water supplies." Stafford Pond is impaired, it's been impaired since the late 1990s, it remains impaired, this is the EPA's list. You'll also notice that Nonquit is now an impaired water body as well. And one of the things about groundwater and surface water is that, you know, the water that's in the ponds is the same water that's in the ground that serves our wells. So if the quality of the water in our surface water bodies is not in good condition, it means we're not also taking really good care of the groundwater that serves public wells. And given that there's no real intention to ever expand public water outside of North Tiverton, and to bring it to all of South Tiverton, or even parts of the eastern side of, of North Tiverton, you know, the groundwater's really critical. And I think my concern in all of this is that, as time has passed, since the original watershed overlay district protection regulations went into place, that the institutional knowledge and understanding of the science, and how water bodies become impaired, and what we need to do to protect them, has been somewhat lost. You know, I've had conversations with other members of boards and commissions, with staff members at Town Hall, and, and I think there's just a real lack of understanding and appreciation of the science behind this, and how it really works. And it seems to me that we've moved in 20 years from something that we were being fairly stringent about implementing, to a model where we're much more likely to, to sort of try and find ways to get people around this. And I know it's not easy, developers come in with their attorneys, and they come in with their engineers, and they argue that, you know, this one more thing isn't really gonna make a difference. But the fact of the matter is that, for both Stafford and Nonquit, it really is a game of inches. There aren't a lot of big things we can do to protect the water quality, but, you know, every time we sort of sidestep these regulations, because, well, it's just a business that wants to expand, or, or we just wanna put one more bedroom on our house, or we just wanna, you know, pave one more area of our lot and create that much more impervious surface, you know, as we do this, we're losing the water quality. And if we were to lose Stafford Pond as a drinking water supply, it would really be catastrophic. But, you know, there is a limited amount of runway there, in terms of its impairment, before that becomes, you know, a reality. I'm not sure exactly what the solution is, other than, I think the commitment starts at the council level, with being dedicated to protecting ground and surface water. I think we need maybe to think about some educational outreach, potentially bringing some folks from URI, like Lorraine Jubert, or, or somebody from DOH or D E M, to really get people up to speed, so that they can understand, you know, how our water bodies get in this kind of condition, and, you know, what we can do to, to try and protect those water sources for as long as we can.
Madam President.
Counsel Edwards?
Thank you. First off, Counsel Hilton, thank you for bringing this to our attention. And I just wanted to ask the administrator if it would be possible to get somebody from D E M to maybe come and give us a little background on the science. You know, I, I read the press release, and it just sort of, it seems like it just kind of, the algae comes out of nowhere, and just kind of grows, and so, you know, obviously, as Counsel Hilton mentioned, if this is something that's coming out of the groundwater, we should be aware of it, like, you know, we need to know before we, you know, before we dive into this too far, we should know where this algae comes from, what the source is, what the science is behind it, so we can communicate that to the public, and then track down the true source. So, you know, we know for sure that it's not, you know, somebody putting up another bedroom in their house, or building a building, you know, we need to know where the, where the issues stem from.
I'd be happy to. And, you know, is, probably one thing we may wanna consider going forward is, not just educating the council, because it's really the zoning board and the planning board who make decisions that are outside your purview, that will affect how, you know, where and how the development is. So, just educating them, and as maybe members of our, you know, the staff as well.
Madam President.
Thank you.
Counsel LeBeau?
I just have, the only concern that I have, and I'm all about clean water myself, the landowners around these, what do they call them?
Watershed.
The watershed overlay, we don't wanna take all of their rights away, so long as they can do something to keep the water, the groundwater, the sewer, there's, with, with the century we live in, there's no reason to tell people that, well, you can't do this because of groundwater. We need to have a way, or buy their property for fair market value. You don't wanna own 10 acres on, on the pond and not be able to put a three-bedroom house. Limit it to, don't let any more big properties come in, but we don't wanna tell people, well, too bad, you're gonna pay your taxes, and if you don't like it, sell it to somebody else who just wants to pay taxes. So there has to be some way out there to protect the landowners or buy their land, and then we'll protect the pond through financial gain, for the town, on open space or something like that.
Yes, Counsel.
So, so Counsel LeBeau, the, the one thing to know in, in all of these, and, and this is true of the watershed overlay regulations, those are zoning regulations, and, and as a council, we can't simply pass them without, you know, the entire public input and public hearing process. And in many cases, I think that, and, and keep in mind, you know, if you're a homeowner in the watershed, particularly if you live close to one of those ponds, forget the drinking water issue. It, it doesn't do a lot for your property value if you're living on a pond that's technically considered impaired or contaminated.
I, I agree.
So, in many cases, a lot of times, it's just education, and when people really understand what it is that contributes to the impairment, then, you know, it's in their best interest, and, once they understand it in many cases, and, you know, there is a balance, and I think we can do it. I think we've just gotten a little out of balance, and, and, again, I think a lot of that is people really just understanding, you know, how it is that, you know, these excessive levels of nutrients end up in these drinking water supplies, or recreational ponds, too. And it's something we can do, you know, together, as a community, without being overly heavy-handed.
So I think what I'm understanding is, well, see if we can get D E M representative come and talk to us, and then we'll invite the other boards to that meeting, and they can participate. Is that okay with everyone?
Yes, although, one good resource, even, I think frankly, a little bit better than D E M, is at the University of Rhode Island, the Nemo Organization, which stands for...
A little, a little orange fish.
It's a, yeah, it's a little, their logo's a little orange fish. But it actually stands for non-point education for municipal officials. They're actually chartered under the state charter to help municipal officials and boards understand exactly these kinds of environmental issues. And they're a great organization, they're used to speaking with folks like us, and it's available to us at no charge, and, and I believe that you'll find that both the Conservation Commission and the planning board have good relationships with the personnel over there, and they might be an excellent resource to come.
Counsel Edwards, is that okay?
Yeah, I mean, just, I wanna have somebody who can explain the science behind it, that's all.
Okay. All right, so we'll discuss it at the next meeting, and maybe we'll have somebody here at the next meeting. DPW Director Anderson, authorization to advertise and hire replacement truck driver laborer.
Thank you, Madam President. As a result of a, I've had an employee on FMLA for the last six months, he was unable to return to work for his medical reasons, so I'm gonna have to replace him with the upcoming winter session. I would like to have, you know, obviously permission to advertise that position as a truck driver laborer, so I can bring my force back up to 10 employees.
Any questions from the council? Like entertain a motion?
Madam President.
Counsel Edwards?
Uh, motion to authorize DPW Director Anderson to advertise and hire replacement truck driver slash laborer.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in second, and all those in favor, unanimous.
Thank you.
Stay right where you are, 'cause you have two more. DPW Director William Anderson requests approval of big contract award for rehabilitation of the old Stonebridge abutment project to John Rockio Corporation of Smithfield, Rhode Island, for an amount not to exceed $1,781,833.45. Stonebridge abutment ad hoc subcommittee recommendation continued from September 25th.
Thank you. All right, so this is, this is the Stonebridge Award. The Stonebridge Award I'm asking for today is for the low bidder, which is John Rockio Corporation. Currently, DOT has approved this vendor, subject to a couple outstanding little issues that they're still working out, but they still, they haven't had any issue with the low bidder. The $1.78 million represents the base bid price, which is to fix the abutment, what the, what has to happen to fix the abutment, which is $1.697 million. And the add alternate bid item two, which is $84,390, is to add just the lights and the pedestal out near Main, Main Road, that's, that's, that's what add alternate number two was. I know there was a discussion earlier, but just so, the, the committee did know it, when, when we put this bid, when they had VHB put this bid together, there was the base price to fix the abutment, to stop the problems that was happening. Add alternate number one had an option, instead of using concrete block on top to fix the, the wall itself, they were gonna use a wet masonry. Add alternate number two was to put the lights in. Now, the wiring, the conduit, and the bases and the foundations, that's all being put in with the base bid price. I'm sorry, without the wires. But the conduit and the foundations, those, there are seven structures, light structures going on there, that's all part of the base bid price already. A dead, a dead number two actually is basically to wire it and put the actual lights, and the, that is what that was. The committee did recommend, and one of the recommendations was that, yes, they did wanna go with add alternate number two, they did not wanna go with add alternate number one. So the Stonebridge Committee recommended that they wanna stick with the concrete block and the base bid. They did not wanna spend the additional money for add alternate number one, which is the wet masonry look. But they did wanna go with the lights for safety reasons, for other things, they, they did want us to put that in. So the, I'm asking for the $1.78 million. Just to go on a quick sum, we, we did get six bids on this, from companies, from, from Manafort to Brothers to New England Building and Bridge Company. The prices were very close, so from the, based on the base bid, it was 1.7 million to, I guess our high bidder was $2.1 million. Based on a review whenever, of the top three people, John Rockio Corporation of Smithfield, Rhode Island was the low, was the low bidder, and, and had the best price. Last, at the last meeting, I actually tabled, asked for a table because of some, an issue that VHB had brought to, to our attention. I never got the full answer from VHB, however, I did speak to the other party involved, and that was, John Rockio actually is the contractor for the Dartmouth project on the aqueduct. The problem there really is not, I don't believe it's really, I don't wanna say this, I don't think it's gonna hurt us like they hurt them. From what I understand, then, when they, we had a, we have a $2 million, $2.2 million budget for this, that's, that is in the state, that the state's paying for, our share, 2.254, of which I'm asking for 1.78. So there is still money available for change orders that may come up, and again, anytime we're working subsurface, you're gonna have that, that happen. On the aqueduct project, what happened was, they had a budget of 6 million, the bid prices came in at 8 million, and now the project's at 10 million because of the existing conditions were so, the plans didn't represent what happened with the existing conditions, so when they started opening up their, their causeway or their, their, their structure, I don't know what they used for plans, but that's not what, what was in the field, so it resulted in change orders. We have a lot of borings, we have a lot of things now. To say it's not perfect, we have borings, we have information, there doesn't seem to be, from what I've been able to look at, is it, that we, I'm expecting a lot of issues. I'll feel better once the sheeting's all in, 'cause from there on, everything's above grade. Again, I don't know if we're gonna open up the abutment and find gigantic holes from erosion and wave action, I'm hoping we don't. But again, we do have some level of comfort here, we do have some money for change orders. I've got $160,000 out is being reserved for the engineering, and oversending to provide to DOT for the, for their certification and their payment. But other than that, that's, that's where this project is, is going to stand. So whereas VHB did state, say things, one of the things that I will be controlling is the fact that, yes, if we're authorizing the lights, the lights are not gonna happen till the very end of the project. If we start running short on funds, we pull that line on them, strictly from the contract, and they don't install the lights. We'll, the foundations, the conduits, it'll be there, but then it'll cause another issue on the, on the other side of things, but we'll have to work on that later.
Any questions?
Madam President? Okay, so I'm just trying to listen to what Mr. Reed said earlier, but from what you said, you can go ahead with this project and hold off on the lights?
We could. Add alternate number two was to install the lights, the actual poles, and, and the thing, and do the wiring, and, and get it all powered up.
I, I mean, I would, I, I think it's a valid point, just because of the lights that are all over the place, it's like, it really is, I, I believe that it's not good for the, for the, looking at the sky as well. But I would be, I'd like to hear, or if, if Mr. Reed talks with Brett, I would also like to hear from Brett or the committee as well, because my guess is, it sounds like they did, are you on the committee?
I've attended some of the meetings, yes.
It sounds like they did address it, and there's all different kinds of lights that you can use, so I would just be more comfortable to, to know what those lights are, and if we can, I forgot what it's called, ambient light or something like that, but it can be really destructive. So I, I would like that, but it sounds also that we, you could go forward and still address the questions about the lighting, is that...
Correct.
Okay.
Counsel Hilton?
So the alternate bid includes the pedestal, too?
Correct. The $84,000 in alternate bid two includes, it does include the pedestal, it includes the electronics to run the lights.
Okay, but the, but the pedestal's gonna have to go in one way or the other, right?
The pedestal goes in as part of the base bid, but however, the pedestal that you're thinking about is just an empty shell.
Right.
So, so whether or not we do, so, even if we brought power and we, we did our, our stuff at that pedestal for the lights, we'd still have to put other components in there as part, to power underground to the bathhouse at Grinnell's Beach. That's still gonna be a, that's still an extra cost somewhere to do that.
Okay.
Madam President?
One second. And on the lights, I don't know if the committee considered this, but, and, and maybe you know, or maybe you don't know, whether or not they consider dark sky compliant lights?
That I don't know. I know there are decorative light that you usually see, that's, that was proposed, again, it was, it was very, I was having trouble finding the exact information in the bits back, when Mr. Reed came in this morning, exactly what type of light, and things like that. But I, I can, I can send it over to VHB to ask them that exact question.
If they're dark sky compliant.
I'm also having our, our streetlight vendor Prism look at the lights to make sure that there, there is not, it's not gonna create issues such as too bright on, on the abutment, whereas, you know, just so everyone understands that when in town, instead of using the normal LED replacement, I'm gonna say 500 or 600 watt lantern bulb, we're using a 300. in town. We're like, not to say the guinea pig, but we tried this, and now other towns are starting to come here and look and see what the, how the brightness of these new lights are. It's a lot less.
Well, there, I mean, there are dark sky compliant lights that shine light down, but there's no bulb glare, like you don't see, the, the light goes down onto the surface, but if you look at the lights, you don't see any light at all. You don't see the bulb, you don't see the glare, it just...
Shines down.
It just shines the light down, and that definitely reduces light pollution.
Great.
Somewhere in my memory from a couple of years ago, I can remember this discussion when this was first started, so I think Brett does have some information, because Brett was concerned about big glare and that kind of stuff.
Because I think the parents were too.
Yeah, so I really think that Brett has addressed some of this. Without Brett here, I can't say for sure.
I can't tell you for sure what was that.
But I can remember Brett discussing lighting at some meeting.
Oh yeah, and, and a couple of meetings we're at, I was at present for with the, that committee, they were talking about lighting.
Yeah, they're very, they were, Mr. Reed's concerns, I can remember them saying they don't want it to be this big neon glow. So, yes, Mr. Reed, I'd like to say something.
One alternative would be some kind of low-level lighting that is kind of pedestrian related, that lights the ground where you're walking and where people can see it without the, I, I know where it is in the situation, I just wanted to suggest the consideration of some other alternatives like that.
And I'm sure when you speak to Brett, you might feel a little more comfortable, but I'm gonna have him call you.
Appreciate your consideration.
Okay. Anything else, Bill?
Madam President?
So now I just need to entertain a motion.
Oh, I have one question for Director Anderson. Can you talk to me about this wet stone masonry and why the committee felt it was not a good idea to leverage it?
Based on the discussion, they decided that they were gonna go with, with the block, the, the pre, prefabricated concrete block. It's gonna have a, it's gonna look like a wet stone ma, I'm sorry, it's gonna look like, not gonna look like a straight, straight faced block, it's actually gonna have a masonry effect on the outside, coming from the manufacturer, they just decided it wasn't worth spending the extra money to come out and, and replace the concrete block with a, a, a mason going in there and doing it all by hand.
So it's gonna look cheaper than a stone masonry?
It shouldn't, but again, that's, that, I left that decision with the committee. I didn't make that decision for them, they had, I presented everything, and they decided not to go with option number one with the wet masonry. I mean, we, there is, there is in the bid, there's enough money to go with that, if, if that's so true to be an option, but right now, the committee felt it was, it was better to go with the concrete block and the base bid rather than go with the full...
Out of curiosity, what's it like on the other side, when they originally built this bridge before everything happened? I mean, was there wet stone masonry originally, or are we, I mean, it sounds like we're just, obviously, we want to be historically accurate.
Right, correct, but yeah, it's, it's wet stone masonry on the other side.
So, yeah, so we're gonna have one side block and one side wet stone masonry?
Correct.
Okay.
Can it be added later onto the block at a later date? If they say there's 150 grand left and it's enough to do it, and everybody's happy, they got their whatever they want?
Actually, hold on one second, I'll tell you exactly how much of that's gonna, that would cost.
It's like 54,000 or something like that?
Yeah, it was, it's in my table. All right. Nope, it's actually $77,108 to, to basically switch from a concrete block to the wet stone masonry.
But can it be added after?
Could we add as a change order after?
Yeah, like after the, the wet, the block?
I don't see why we couldn't, I mean, we could do it, I could do it as a change order directive and come back to get approval from the council again.
Right.
After that.
I don't think that's what you're asking?
No, it's not.
You're asking, put the block in?
No, you can't, you can't, it's either the block or you have to go, go and, no going into it when we get to that step, that instead of the con, ordering the concrete block, we're get, where the masons are gonna come in and start. So after they dry the sheet piling and backfill and get it all set and pour a, pour a concrete foundation below, above the waterline but below, along the edge, then they have to build, bring the, basically the rock wall back up to get to the top to put the stone cap on it. So you'll still have a stone cap all the way around that will match, you just, unless you're on the water side or the northern side in the basin looking at it, you're gonna see, one, you may, and you have to go around and look and see what the other side really looks like from the beach side.
It just, to me, it feels like it's a little cheap. The question I would have is, if we, let's say we vote to put in add alt number one for the wet stone masonry, is this similar to what we would be with the lights, where we get to that point, and if we don't have the funds, like, let's say they open up and they find a void and we gotta do all this extra stuff, can we strip that out at the time? I know we're concerned about contingencies, but...
Again, I could have that discussion, we'd have to, again, at the kickoff meeting with the contractor, we'd have to have that discussion about, okay, what's the point, you're gonna either have to place the order for the concrete block, or place the order for the stone and have the masons come in at that point? And what's the lead time on getting the concrete block here compared to what's the lead time to have the stone delivered and go from there?
We're talking about a $2.2 million project, I mean, $77,000 is like a drop in the bucket on that.
With $500,000 still on the table?
Yeah, you know what I was just thinking, although, Councilwoman Hilton, go ahead.
So, I'm, having attended a number of those meetings, just because there's some overlap with the Grinnell's Beach Committee, I, I will say this, Counselor Pelletier in my, or former Counselor Pelletier, in my experience, is a person who's very deeply concerned about the aesthetics about this thing. And I can think of many times where he really went to the mat with VHB over some design thing in this that he didn't think was aesthetically pleasing. He also shared with us lots of the samples of the railings and things, and I mean, like, everything that they've picked is really beautiful, and, and they want this to look historic. So I'm inclined to think that if the, knowing how this committee has operated, that if the visual difference between the, you know, wet stone masonry or the block, which I understand they're gonna treat to look like wet stone masonry.
Correct.
And maybe even, is it potential because of it's the stone block, maybe it even has, I don't know, maybe it's even structurally stronger, that if they, if they had the money and they thought this wasn't gonna look nice, they wouldn't go for it, because they've been super picky about everything being as, just as nice as possible. So I'm inclined to think that if that's what they went with, it's gonna be really nice, because they, they, they wouldn't agree to it otherwise, at least not in my experience of being at their meetings.
I have one more question.
Councilwoman Edwards?
Just to, well, if I can add one other thing, just so you know. So the, the precast concrete block with the face, with the split rock face or whatever it's gonna look like, that's $180,000, okay, based on the contractor's price. If we switch to masonry, the difference, taking that out and putting the wet masonry back in, the wet masonry is about $279,000 because of the labor involved to do all of it. I mean, it's, it's, it really has to be, it's one or the other, we can't do both because there is a deduct in here, so, I mean, I, I'll do it either way you want to do it, I mean, again, I, I, I'm going by what the committee said to me, so it doesn't matter to me above, I'm just more worried about making sure the foundation and the wall's gonna work rather than when we get above what it's gonna look like, so...
I'm wondering if we should invite the committee here to answer our questions.
I would have liked them to have been here, that would have been...
Yeah, before we really make any decisions, because I don't feel like we're educated enough on this. And we really haven't talked to them at all. They haven't really presented this to us. Because I have a lot of questions, I think. Trish?
Well, oh well, maybe, one suggestion I had, because we've already pushed this back a week, and I know that there's a, I mean, they want to get going on this. If, if we were to vote tonight to accept the Richeo bid, would there be enough time if we could get the committee to come next week, I mean, next meeting, and we wanted to change something?
Answer that question is yes. This, this contract is not starting until after January.
So we could vote, we could vote tonight to get the contract?
In place.
In place, but there'd be enough time and nobody would have ordered anything by the next council meeting, we could get the committee to come, and if there's something, if we wanted to change something, we could ask them to change it then?
But if there isn't a rush till January, then we could table this until we speak to them.
Right, but I'd like to start, at least get my discussions going with the contractor. He's not gonna actually start a physical construction in January, but he's got a lot of submittals and he's got a lot of paperwork to do upfront, that I'd like to at least get going on. Again, the DOT is still doing some of their own work, and they're not gonna have the final go, but they would like to at least get the kickoff meeting going and talking about it.
All right, so, we could, go ahead, Sean.
Sorry.
No, 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 that's fine.
But the last question I had is, so we've got 2.254 million in state money for this, let's say everything kind of goes to plan, and we spend 1.781, no change orders. What's going on with the rest of that money?
I don't believe we're getting any of it.
So just go back to the state?
Yes, well, we're gonna spend at least $160,000 between testing and, and engineering oversight fees. Well, that's what the agreement agreed, has, has agreed to, I don't know, I'm getting prices from the NPA to actually do all of that, and I'm almost got them all. But again, if we don't spend it, I, I would imagine the state's gonna just take the rest of that money anyway.
Spend it.
That's my thought process.
So any change orders, though, we're going to this?
Right, so any change orders would come back, and I'd have to come in front of you and tell you what happened, what's this, and, and get permission to, to spend the money, correct?
Yeah, keep in mind, there's always some change orders, because I remember when I was on the school board and we were building the new schools, there were several different expenses that popped up.
Let's just say this, in all the projects I've ever worked on, there's the best laid plans that an engineer can come up with. When you're working on the gra, underground and you can't, you don't have a boring every one foot, you're gonna hit something, right, correct.
We may end up spending this.
Right, we, I'm just hoping we don't go over the 2.2, and now we're on the hook.
Madam President?
Christine?
I just have a question for either you and/or the solicitor. If we do vote for this, can, we can word it so that, you know, we will vote for it on the conditions of, I mean, how would you word it, so that we don't get caught into, in trouble?
If, if you voted for it, and later on, you had a, a meeting with the Stonebridge Committee and you set aside if you wanted to make a change order or anything?
Yep.
You'd have the time to make a change order on that.
Correct, and I can't, just because you're voting tonight, I still have to accord of the contract documents, I have to issue a notice to proceed to the contractor. I won't do that until after we've had, I could wait till the next meeting. It just gives me a tentative award, I can talk to the contractor.
That's what I want, that's what I want, so it doesn't hold you up, and then, and then he doesn't start thinking, what's going on there?
Correct.
Okay.
Madam President?
Councilwoman Edwards?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the bid contract award for the rehabilitation of the old Stonebridge Abutment project to John Richeo Corporation of Smithfield, Rhode Island, for an amount not to exceed 1.781,833.45. Stonebridge Abutment ad hoc subcommittee recommendation continued from the previous meeting.
And in the motion, could you invite the Stonebridge Abutment meeting to, Committee to meet with us, probably October 23rd, see if someone's available? Is that okay?
I will accept that one, that would be perfect.
Before you finish that, will we have to...
I need a second. Okay, go ahead.
All right, will we have to invite the public to, because we're gonna invite another committee, or no? Doesn't have to be open to the public?
Oh yeah, it'll be at a regular town council meeting.
Also, the public will be able to?
Yep, they'll be able to, and I'll even, you know, I'll let some concerned people talk.
All right.
Okay. I have a vote in a second, any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. DPW Director Bill Anderson requests approval of award for supply and installation of Grinnell's Beach sail shade structure.
All right, this is the first of a couple of bids that'll be coming across you, across to you for approval. This is the first one on the sail shade structure, it's a five pole, three sail shade structure. We bid to, I should say, we put it, a bid for 11,060 square feet to basically cover the old gas station site. We received three bids from Green Acres Landscaping and Construction Company of Lakeville, Mass, which actually bid the, for $56,649, they actually bid the product we spec. Pro Built Designs, Inc. of Marshfield, Mass, $47,000, they bid an alternate from Apollo Sun Screens, both companies, though the manufacturers are out of Florida, and Sperry Fabric Architecture of Rochester, Mass, for $68,200. When we reviewed the bids, or when I reviewed the bids, basically, two of the companies proposed a sail shade system that the committee had, had reviewed, such as a three, three sails, five poles, set situated in the ground. The third company had two separate structures next to each other, the committee kind of didn't, didn't match the motif they were looking for, if that's the right word. So after reviewing the bids, I, I recommended that we award the contract to the low bidder, which is Pro Built Designs LLC of Marshfield, Mass, which they provided an alternate bid, obviously because they're using a, a system, a sail shade structure system that meets or exceeded the bid, bid that we asked for, for an amount not to exceed $47,000.
Any discussion?
Madam President?
John?
I just have a question for the administrator. The last contract that we just approved, that money is money that came from the federal government through the state, where is this $47,000 coming from?
A grant. I think Trish could answer, probably.
Actually, I don't have the, the details of exactly where it came from, so I'll defer to...
So the Grinnell's Beach Fund has 300, $393,000 in DEM funds, there's a grant money, like, $3,000 from Cultural Resources Management grant money, $15,000 from the Rhode Island Foundation in grant money, and then there's about $30,000 in private donations. So we have all of the funding of those things, the CRMC money, the Rhode Island Foundation money, and the privately raised money is currently in an account that the treasurer has control of. The DEM grant money is reimbursable, meaning that we do the work and then we submit the stuff to them. And so this shade sail structure will come out of the, you know, the DEM grant money. The treasurer has some leeway as to which, which, how, whether she wants to take it out of the cash or have it be a reimbursable thing, but all of the funds that are necessary are accounted for and accrued downstairs in the treasurer's office.
Okay, so, I mean, I just, me personally, I want to make sure that we're not kind of taking money out of current cash flow and, and buying something and then hoping for reimbursement from the state, which could come any, any time. So I would feel more comfortable if we're using it from the cash accounts that are specifically earmarked for this project.
I, I think the treasurer, when, when we were awarded this grant, the treasurer did go to a meeting with DEM about the whole reimbursement process, which I understand is fairly quick, and I asked her if she had any concern or issue of anything, and she said, no, this is sort of standard vanilla, as long as I submit my paperwork, it's completely fine. But she does have an amount that's there in cash, so she can always use that and then submit for reimbursement, but I, you know, if you have any questions, I would certainly go check with her, but when I asked her whether or not she was completely comfortable with this whole system, she said, you know, it's not unlike all kinds of other state reimbursements we get, it's sort of situation normal.
Any other questions?
I need it in a little easier term. Any money coming out of the town? No taxpayer money for this project at all?
Trish and her committee applied for all these grants, and they got the work funded by these grants.
All right, because I just added up $411,000, so that didn't include the building?
Just to clarify, the, the town's contribution in this, which was well-known and approved by the council that approved this, was some skin in the game in terms of labor, and that includes both the, you know, some of the labor that the DPW's work has done, as well as the volunteer committee, the people who were, have volunteered to plant, all that sort of stuff. So we are putting some sweat equity into this, but the vast majority of, the vast majority of the money is all been raised as grant money.
Okay, so we're not, we're not gonna get caught at the end with our pants down and owe 50 grand, because I know there's other work that has to be done, there's slabs that have to be poured?
One of the, we're pretty comfortable going forward with ordering the shade sail structure, but, and Bill can probably tell you this, there are a handful of other bid items that have to come in, and we're not gonna go, other than the shade structure, we're not going forward with any of the other things till we get all the bids, just to make sure that, you know, we've got the whole budget covered, because if we had to, there are... there are some things that we could cut to stay under budget, so we won't, um, expend any monies on things until we're sure that we have enough money to pay for everything, um, without, you know, having the town be on the hook for anything.
Madam President?
Good answer.
Counsel Edwards?
One, one more question. Uh, Director Anderson, how much sweat equity have we put into this project already, if we had to put a dollar amount on it? And then, to, that, what does that equate to, a grant money for us to get back?
Not including my time, which isn't, which hasn't added to the bill yet, um, we're at 86,000 and change. Um, that will be the bill that I'm putting together to give to the treasurer right now. That includes all the sand purchased to date, that includes all the gravel, that includes, uh, everything that we, that you see out there right now to date. What it doesn't include is the, obviously, the sail shades, it doesn't include the concrete sidewalks and the ramp we gotta put in, the concrete pad that goes under the sail shade area. Um, plantings are being done by the volunteers, uh, which is mostly grasses and things like that. Um, so the, and then I just realized, which I didn't know up front on that drawing, is that the, even though the asphalt work is shown on, on the Grinnell's Beach plan, it's actually on the Stone Bridge documents. So that's part of, Stone Bridge is doing that, not, not Grinnell's Beach. So the bigger, and then the other ticket item that could be large is whatever changes we're gonna make to the bath house, and we're still trying to figure that out.
So, so I guess the, the question is, in order to get 393,000 dollars from DEM, how much sweat equity does the town have to put up in order to get that money? And is it, is it a reimbursement, or is it a, this is, you know, like, like they do with the school committee where, you know, where they're gonna reimburse, they're gonna cover essentially a portion of the cost?
I don't know.
Do you know?
We're, we're, we're good. We're, we are fully, we have fully met our commitment, so everything, um, that we have, um, is fully reimbursable. All the things that we're gonna do going forward, because we've fully met our sweat equity component of this.
So 86,000 gets us 393?
Um, 86,000 gets us the 393, plus we've also got, as I said, another 15, another three, and another 30,000.
Could I ask you one more question?
Go ahead, Mandy.
Well, somebody came to me today and asked me about swing sets and stuff. I didn't know anything about swing sets in a soccer field or something over there, or whatever it is they're doing. Um, are, are they coming? They asked me, are they gonna put them at the beach?
So...
I didn't know anything about swing sets, I didn't know there was swing sets, but I went and looked at that, there was a soccer thing over there, whatever it is.
It, that's a, that's a...
Volleyball.
It's a volleyball net. Um, there, there, there was some playground equipment that was there before, that was pretty dilapidated and in very poor condition, and frankly, um, according to our former town administrator, an insurance liability because it was in such bad shape. So that was removed. We had a discussion about new playground equipment there. However, um, the, the committee made a decision not to replace the playground equipment for two reasons. Um, the first is that there, you know, we're lucky, we've got some nice playgrounds right now, including Fort Barton, which is not, the Fort Barton Playground, which is not very far away, um, and a lot of people really said they wanted more beach area. But the other thing is, in this day and age, and to meet insurance requirements, really good playground equipment is incredibly expensive, um, especially if you're going to install it in what FEMA says is a flood zone. So, by the time we looked at what the price of that would be, um, the fact that we'd get, need CRMC permission to put this really expensive stuff in a flood zone, and it won't be insured, by the way, um, we just opted not to try and do permanent playground equipment. We are gonna put in a volleyball net, and we have had some discussions with the Recreation Commission about putting some, having available some, um, uh, how do I put this? Recreational equipment that can be used during the day, but can go in the bath house at night, so stuff for kids to do, um, that we could provide during the day, but at night it goes in the storage room in the bath house.
Any other questions?
Madam President?
Counsel Edwards?
Thank you. Uh, I'd like to make a motion to, uh, approve the, uh, award for supply and installation at Grinnell's Beach Sail Shade to Probuilt Designs LLC of Marshfield, Mass. for a dollar amount not to exceed 47,000 dollars, and tie that 47,000 dollars to be cash on hand, specifically earmarked for this project.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in second, any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Thanks, Mel.
Thank you.
Don't go far, Bill. Don't go far.
What else you got?
Uh, town administrator announcements.
Thank you. If I may, I'll take some of these out of order, so the bill doesn't have to stay up there forever. Bill, um, we've talked about, you mentioned PRISM earlier, if you could just give a quick update on the PRISM contract, uh, the, the conversion to LED?
Sure, um, so I've been, I've been assigned the PRISM contract, I'm dealing with the streetlights, since that's part of DPW anyway. Um, PRISM is about 15% completed in the town, they started in the northern end. Um, what is, is not, what, so, so some, some interesting findings, um, that they experienced in Providence and other poorer areas of, of the state, is that, um, where they usually find one in every seven, um, bulbs or staff, masks that come off to spot the bulbs needs to be, um, replaced, um, we're actually finding every two out of five in this town needs to get replaced. Um, their wiring is so bad that it's gonna, it's actually gonna cost a little extra money, but with the, PRISM thinks that with the contingency, let me, let me back up. Um, PRISM thought that the contractor was looking for, um, that the contract that they were using there, sub, was looking for extras. So they actually went out and started looking at these and actually found out that whoever did the job for National Grid originally, um, did a very bad job. Um, so unfortunately, we bought them as is, where is, it's ours, and it's in whatever condition they're in, we have to now fix and get it taken care of. So PRISM is going about doing that, it's part of the, we do have contingency money that was in the original agreement, and maintenance money that we don't, we shouldn't have to ex, well, between that and the maintenance money, we should be able to, this won't, shouldn't cause the town any further, any further funding, that's one, that's already been approved. Um, and hopefully, he's, they're hoping that as they move out of the northern end of town to the southern end of town, that things change, and that it gets back to the norm. Um, and they were just a little surprised at what they found. Um, just so everyone, but also, as I said a little earlier, we're not really putting the high wattage bulb in that everybody's been seeing, we're actually using a 300-watt bulb, or 300, yeah, something like that, that's actually a lot lower, that more towns are starting to look at now for that same thing of, uh, but we are using the bright, the bright white or the cool white, so you're actually seeing the true color instead of what we see now. Um, other things that I'm talk, trying to figure out if they're included, are the, are our two parks, um, down at Skateboard Park, I call it, and on Bogomash, I'm sorry, on Bogomash, and then the other one is on Town Farm, we have lights there, I'm hoping that they get, they're supposed to be replaced as well. Um, and then I'm also working with them on the, on the casino project, because there's, uh, two replacements and five new lights that have to be put over there, that we will own when we're done.
So, we'll monitor it, just to make sure that if we're getting close to what our escrow amount is, that we'll, we'll take action accordingly.
Correct.
We'll see how it progresses once we get out of the hoopturin'. Thank you. Uh, next, the Grinnell's Beach update, I don't necessarily think there's anything more to say there on that. Um, just a reminder, the flu shots are over the fire department at, um, at the 85 Main Department on Thursday, uh, at 11 o'clock to 1:00. Um, in your packet is the, um, oil contract that, um, uh, that is done by the East Bay Collaborative, and was actually negotiated by Bill Fiore over at the school for us on behalf of the town. So that's the pricing for the next year. Um, Item I5 is the listing of, of, as the, the town clerk and I went through, um, various ad hoc committees or other committees that had existed that have already passed their sunset, or are about to, or will, it's just administrative cleanup that will close those out. And I think you can see the last two, the Stone Bridge Committee and the Stone Bridge Task Force Committee, are not the same thing as the Stone Bridge Abutment Committee.
Yeah, I think that's what the problem is, not...
And finally, um, I said, I sent a note out earlier to you all. Um, one of the things that I noticed, especially as we were going about purchasing new vehicles, and we've, you know, spent, you know, close $200,000 on new fire and, and building vehicles, is we have items and people's contracts that say they should get a car, or they don't get a vehicle, or, or whatever the case may be, but that's where our policy ends. We have no policy on the use, how it's used, when it's used, it, it may vary based on job description, uh, may be, vary based on state or federal law, and I just think that we need to have some sort of a policy that, um, lays that out. So I'll work with the solicitor and the treasurer, just to see if there are any tax implications to that, um, and, um, we'll come up with a policy for your consideration to put into place for any department had at any time in the future may have need for a car, but certainly the ones that currently have it.
Is that it?
That's it.
Thank you. Uh, council announcements?
Madam President?
Counsel Edwards?
Just have, uh, one, uh, I wanna thank Linda Larson, Kelly Levesque, and the rest of the committee for putting on what I dubbed the pumpkin spooktacular at Grinnell's Beach. Uh, I guess there were about 500 people and 1,200 marshmallows that were gone through, and a ton of pumpkins, and I've got a little guy sitting on my, my doorstep as well, so thank you guys very much for a successful event.
Thanks for not reminding me.
Any town council, any town council announcements for the ones? Uh, town solicitor? Town clerk?
Although I will jump in on this item, if I may, Madam President. Um, so there was a, a charter complaint, uh, filed, uh, by Justin Katz, it, um, alleges a violation of the school committee as a body, and also several members on the committee. As part of the request, Mr. Katz asked for recusal of some, but not all, of the council members, uh, sitting. We've reviewed that issue extensively, um, and essentially, uh, the basis of his claim was the fact that there was prior involvement with the, uh, school committee optional budget that was proposed, and that's the, that's what he's complaining about. Uh, so after extensive discussion on that, uh, Tony and I have come to agreement that, uh, not only is he correct that the three members that he's mentioned should recuse, but in fact, uh, every member of the council should recuse. Uh, there was extensive discussion on that topic before the council, uh, that hit directly on what he's complaining of. Um, and there's a, a well-established principle in the law, citing Barba Realty Case and the Champwens versus, uh, T. Cohen, uh, case, where you can't have substantive discussions prior to a hearing that could indicate what the decision maker would decide. Uh, so, it's our opinion that the council has to recuse from this. Uh, under the charter, it sets up a, a two-part, um, a two-part, uh, system, where in the ordinary case, the council will make a decision, and then it's referred to the municipal court to, uh, decide the violation, the, uh, penalty for violation, if a violation is found. Uh, there is a, a procedure set up, if there is, um, a majority of the council that can't participate, uh, that it goes directly to the municipal court to both determine whether there's a violation, and also determine if there's a penalty. So, it'd be our advice to Nancy, who's received this complaint, that this should go directly to a municipal court on that basis.
Nancy, do you have anything else to add?
Well, no, it's been set before the councilship, actually, so the center has given his opinion, we're gonna follow his opinion, I presume.
So be going to the municipal court judge.
I'll contact the, I'll contact the municipal court judge and see when he's able to sit on this.
Now, does he also, does he also have the 30 days that we, that we had?
So, there's 10 days to file it with the court, um, and that 10 days ends on October 13th, so it would just be a matter of taking the complaint, that's been, um, that Mr. Katz has filed with the town, submitting it to the court, and the court will, uh, schedule it when his docket allows.
Any questions from the council?
Yes.
Go ahead, Randy.
Go ahead. You, you might have the same question, but...
Is, is there anything that we have to formally do around this recusal? I mean, do we ha...
We all have to recuse?
Like, do we have to actually formally recuse, or do we adopt your statement, or like?
So essentially, um, you know, uh, the, uh, the way the charter is written, is that this, um, process happens before it gets to the charter. Now, if there was only a couple of members that would recuse, that requires you to stand in the record to recusing and leave, uh, but since there's a majority of the council that can't participate, the complaint will just be redirected to the municipal court that will handle it.
Which is inaction the town clerk has to do, which we have, we have nothing to do with.
That's correct.
So there is no action we need to take?
That's correct.
Any other question, Mandy?
Yeah, um, since I was on that complaint, and if I wanted to show up at court and put my two cents in, is that allowed?
Uh, well, you know, I can't, that, that's up to the judge. Um, you weren't named in the actual complaint.
No, but, 'cause he doesn't wanna name me for some reason, but I was on it, and I would like to stand in front of the judge.
The, the court is obviously, um, any court hearing is a public hearing, doesn't mean the judge will hear from you, but...
Oh, he'll hear from me.
That's up to the judge.
But, but the lawyer from their side could ask Randy questions if...
Of course, if, if the other side wanted to call anybody as a witness, they can present any witnesses that they wish to present.
Any, uh, Counsel Edwards?
Thank you. Um, I just have one question for, uh, Madam Clerk. Would it be possible for you to get us sort of a list of the number of charter review complaints submitted by Mr. Katz, and the outcomes associated with those? Uh, just be curious as to whether or not this is just a continual boy who cries wolf type deal, we gotta continue listening to this nonsense?
I am in the process of compiling all the, um, charter complaints, because the Charter Review Commission has asked for them, so, um, I'll get, I'll get them together and...
You'll get a copy to all the, all the councilors, please? Thank you.
Maybe we can, maybe we can hook up, uh, Mr. Dagley, should we have a copy of that too?
But don't expect it tomorrow. It's gonna take a little bit...
I wanted it tonight, while he's here.
Um, any other questions from the council?
They're just not...
All right, thank you.
I do have another, um, issue, though. Um, on, um, we have a schedule for the comprehensive plan, uh, public hearing, community plan public hearing, and it was advertised in the Sycamore Times, and it was sent in for September 27th, October 4th, and October 11th. It was in that first week, we noticed it wasn't in last week, and we called, and they said they had a production error. I have to tell you, our probate in all takes three weeks, we don't normally have this problem, but we had it one other time with them. I, that's just, I guess, the problem with the newspaper now. So, um, because it requires three consecutive weeks, we're not gonna be able to hold those public hearings on the dates.
So the dates were the 24th and the 28th?
It was on Tuesday, the 24th, and Saturday, the 28th. Now, granted, she's not gonna charge us again, but it doesn't help us time-wise with this, but all, all, and I cannot get it in for this week. I could always advertise it in a different paper. The problem with that is, we do our normal public hearing advertisements in the Sycamore Times, and...
That's where people...
That's where people go to look for it.
Um...
And it gets expensive to do it in two papers.
So what week are we talking about now?
Well, I can't get it in this week, because the deadline was today.
Right.
So I'm...
You're talking next week?
Thinking that I can't do it before the 10th, so I'd have to do it, if you stuck with a Tuesday...
Saturday.
Tuesday and Saturday, well, you couldn't do that on November 14th, because that's a regular council meeting, unless you wanted to start...
Well, the regular council meeting's on the night 13th.
No, 'cause that's Veterans Day.
Oh, I always get stuck with those, all right. Okay.
Yeah, the 14th does have all your liquor licenses on there, but...
Yeah.
You could begin it then and have another one Saturday, or you'd have to push it to the...
Could we do it on the Wednesday and the Saturday? The 15th and the 18th?
There's only a building code, Board of Appeals. If they in fact have it, um, sometimes they don't, we'd be able to have it here, if not, we'd have to change the venue, put it at City Center or some...
But we could do that. Is the 15th and the 18th? Is the 15th and the 18th okay with everyone?
It's going to be Wednesday, the 15th.
And Saturday, the 18th?
And Saturday, that's not like the week...
Well, it's not Randy's Thursday date night, so he might be all right. You all right?
Yeah, that's the Saturday before, but I'm sure they won't be charging us to re-advertise, it's their issue, but...
Joni, you all right with those two dates?
So far.
Okay, Christine?
Yep.
Trish? And I am. So, why don't we go for that?
Okay.
15th, 18th, and November.
So, it's going to be on Wednesday, the 15th.
And Saturday, the 18th.
And I had already posted it, of course, on the website, we'll have to... Change it. Make a note on it, and then change it to that.
Madam Clerk, I have a question for you on that one. Since Tom is here from the paper, if he writes a nice little thing and gets it in tonight for the deadline, for the paper, does that count as week one?
No.
Anything you write tonight, will that go in the paper for tomorrow, or is it...
There's no conceivable way.
Okay, I was just checking, I wasn't sure.
It's costing me about $12.
Yeah, I wasn't sure if, you know, you had some inside baseball you could hook us up with, so...
But maybe you could put it in next week, because it would help us.
Are you okay?
Yes.
Uh, Counsel Edwards?
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to go in a closed executive session, Town Administrator Litigation 42465A2, Tiberton V. Camacho Holdings, LLC, AL, NC 2017 0384.
Um, do I have a second?
Second.
Counsel Chappett?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
In continuing enclosed executive session, Town Administrator Collective Bargaining 42465A2, IBPO, lieutenants, sergeants.
Second.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
We're now in executive session, is attorney?
No.
He's not coming, okay.